Okay, we're gonna call to order the April 2025 meeting of the Homewood Planning Commission. If we could please start with a roll call.
All right. Mr. Henninger.
Here.
Ms. Wilcutt.
Here.
Mr. Harwell.
Here.
Mr. Rispinto.
Here.
Mr. Armstead.
Here.
Mr. Broadhead.
Here.
Ms. Andrus.
Here.
Mr. Goulas.
Here.
And Mr. Roberts.
Here, thank you. Next, we have the approval of the minutes from March. I know it was quite a lot to read. They looked good to me. If they look acceptable to everyone else, I'd...
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the minutes are approved. All right, moving along. Communications, Mr. Armstead, do you have any communications this month? Okay. The only thing I have tonight is we have the first four cases or related cases that were heard last month and then paused. The hearing stopped after the conclusion of the public portion of the hearing. The only thing remaining for those cases tonight is for the commission to question the applicant. And second, I want to remind everyone, just procedurally, on all the cases we're voting on tonight, except for the new business, our vote is a recommendation to city council. There'll be another opportunity for this case to be heard before city council, and another opportunity for the public to appear and be heard. That will be properly noticed as required under statute. So I just want to be clear upfront, once we open the old cases, the Sanford cases, it's only going to be the applicant speaking. So that's all I have. And with that, we'll move on to old business. The first four cases, the two rezoning cases, 250302 and 250304, and then the two final development plan cases, 250303 and 250305. Applicant is Landmark Services and Sanford University. If you please come forward, as I said, we'll pick up with questions from the commission. If you could just state your name again for the record and...
Certainly. Bob Dunn, Landmark Development.
Okay. All right, Mr. Dunn, thank you. At the conclusion of our last meeting, I think you indicated that there will be some discussions with the community, some outreach efforts. If you could, and thank you again, we've all received a copy of the summary of the community engagement from the last month, which I thought was very helpful. If you could kind of give a summary of what's happened over the course of the last few weeks since we were last here.
Sure, I'd be happy to. Does everyone have a copy of the materials that we prepared? Just a note for those in the audience, we will upload this to our website this evening so that everyone has access to it. But we wanted to put this information together specifically to address your question. If I could, maybe take a few minutes and just walk you through the document. I think it'll help put perspective on where have we focused our efforts since we were last in front of you. So what we tried to do here was give you a briefing document that really speaks to the process that we were committed to coming to the last meeting, that we are, you know, very much involved with now, and we're committed to continuing as we go forward. And so just a couple of comments to open. Number one, you know, we feel strongly that this process is working. We've used a number of different techniques, I'll say, to begin a process of public engagement. That actually started the night before the last planning commission meeting that we had. That was our first community engagement session. And since then, we've had a series of different meetings of different forms, several, four or five, very public, some private, and we've done what we felt we could do to really reach out and look to gain as much input and feedback as we could. To summarize the feedback that we've gotten, I think it's fair to say that the vast majority of the feedback we've gotten has been supportive and positive. And a lot of that frankly has been centered around the process that I'm gonna touch on just quickly. Number two, a lot of, I think, interest and support for the vision of the project and, you know, some of the opportunities, amenities, et cetera, how this can become, you know, an important part of elevating awareness and education in the Shades Creek watershed, things like that, that we've been very focused on, I think are being recognized and understood, and we're building support for that. I also want to acknowledge and make clear that we've had a lot of comment, concerns, what we think of as key issues, and that's really what we've tried to summarize in the book here. We've had a lot of that feedback as well, and much of that we heard at the last meeting with you, issues about storm water management, water quality and control, the salamander habitat, traffic, density. Those issues have been discussed. We've had a lot of feedback on those issues, and what we've tried to do is listen, learn, and begin to build a process where we think we can find effective solutions to those issues as we go forward, once we've got a framework of a development plan to work with. And so we feel very good about the process that we started. We've had a lot of good engagement, a lot of comments, you know, really in all directions. We provided feedback to that. We've tried to address questions that we've heard, and what we really want to focus on now is a process to go forward. So quickly, I'll just touch on some highlights in the book. Page four and five, I want to underscore this point, you know, while I represent Landmark Development, I think I can speak well on behalf of Sanford University and our partner Johnson Controls, and those representatives are here with me this evening as well. And I think it's also important to acknowledge, we have put together an exceptional team of professionals as we start to talk about some of the ideas and opportunities through design and engineering to really find good working solutions to key issues, apply best practices. You know, we have a team of experts with local and national knowledge that have dealt with these types of issues before, and from the standpoint of Landmark, Sanford, Johnson Controls, and our consultant team, we're very confident that if we follow this process, the outcomes will be, you know, we'll win much more than we lose. We'll solve problems, and we'll have a project that we can all look at with confidence and pride in time as we go forward. So it's just, I wanted to make mention of the team. In terms of community engagement, I'm not gonna go through every page in the book, but we've tried a number of different techniques, as I said, to gain public support. And as we've gone through that, you know, the issues have really come down to a manageable list, I think, of key issues. So that process has helped us better understand where the interests are in the community. And you can, at your leisure, you can just, you can look through the format we've used, the type of discussion we've had, and really what the key topics are. If you flip to page 24, 25, I'm sorry, let's start with 22, 23. What we've tried to do is summarize for you in this spread, really the nature of the comments, the different means through which we've received comments, and where the key issues have really centered. And it speaks for itself, the process that we're taking to advance the development plan, the habitat, storm water, traffic parking, the items that I mentioned. I think we understand the issues well, but that's not really the point that we want to harness and move forward with. If you turn to pages, go forward a couple of pages, page 29, this really is a summary of the issues where we feel the process that we're proposing tonight can get us good outcomes on these key topics. If you just turn through the next couple of spreads, 30, 31, some good work has already been done, and much more work will be done to speak to ways to address concerns that we've heard about the natural habitat, the salamander habitat, you know, ways that we can better position the project, engineer good solutions, drive toward good outcomes that will speak to those issues in a meaningful and an impactful way. I cannot tell you that we will solve every issue to everyone's full satisfaction, but in the aggregate, I'm confident that this team, the sponsors of this project, working with the community, more in the fashion that we have been, we will come together and we will find good solutions to these types of issues. Turn the page, you can see some of what we're beginning to look at in terms of ways to deploy some of these techniques. Look ahead to page 34, 35, storm water management, floodplain management, control mechanisms. Some of these are proven techniques. Some of these ideas really are very directly tied to this site, and finding new and better ways, best practices, to better address storm water management. Same holds true with water quality. If you flip ahead, spread 38, 39, again, things that we know are proven techniques that we can use here to find good engineering solutions. And as you just flipped through the book, traffic connectivity, density and scale, I'm happy to come back and speak to any of these issues. Sanford affiliate housing, I know that was a question in our last meeting. So we've tried to give you just a sense of where do we go from here? How do we pick up the process of community engagement, work with professionals, and begin to work through the mechanics of solving some of these issues? And the last point, if you'll just turn to page 54, 55, this is really what I'd like to stress as the follow-up to our last meeting. What we gained from the start of this process on community engagement, it's really brought us to a point to try and shape and approach a plan, a process that we would like to follow with you to advance the Creekside project. What I mean by that is, number one, through many of our discussions in the sessions that we've hosted, it became apparent to us that as we carry forward with community engagement, we have to have an effective means to interface with interests within the community. What's the best way for us to do that? The idea that we have is we would like to organize a development advisory group that will work directly with us to address the types of issues that I just walked through quickly that are in your book. And that's not the list of issues, but that's representative of where most of the feedback has been centered. We've had a number of people, people you know, very capable people on these topics, offer to work with us in this manner, to put together an organized group that will really help us digest these issues and work through good solutions. That's kind of step one. Step two, and I touched on this in the last meeting, is the idea of putting together a comprehensive Creekside master plan, and advancing that with the development advisory group and our team of technical experts. The point being, our opportunity here is really to look at this project in a holistic manner, to address the types of issues that we've heard through community engagement. Many of these issues we anticipated and we knew coming into this process, but what we would now like to do is work with the advisory group to formulate a full comprehensive plan that will then lead to a set of covenants, conditions, and restrictions that will become a formal filed document that will run with the land. It will set guidelines that we will be obligated to build to as we go forward with individual projects that get built within Creekside. And I think what's important to underscore is, you do not require this of us. As we've gone through, you know, our own thinking about the project, this really fundamentally is why we chose to come to you with this approach of the MXDI3 rezoning and advancing the development plan, was to give us the ability to deal with this project in a more holistic manner versus a building and a building and a building and a building. We will get a better project, we will get a better outcome, and working with community interests, we will gain feedback, input, and we'll find good solutions. This is the best way, in our opinion, to drive the project going forward. And to do this, we will continue through the process of community engagement, using some of the, you know, the means by which we've had community engagement thus far, but really organizing it around the development advisory group. And the last point is just environmental stewardship. I think one thing that was very clear to me early on with the project, when you have a partner who is an academic institution, and you have another partner who is a very large publicly traded company, and you have a development company that's, we've had some experience at this, you know, what we strive for here is a great outcome, a project that will define the city of Homewood well into the future, something that people take real pride in, something where we can demonstrate in measurable ways that we heard, we learned, we addressed these kinds of issues, and we work to find good solutions. When you have an academic partner, you know, this is something that should become a case study in how to do it, not how and why not to do it, but how to do it and how to do it correctly. When you think about land use, environmental stewardship, development planning, those types of things, and that's really my job tonight, was after meeting with our partners yesterday, was to make an ask of you, and we hope to have your full support. What we would like to have is the opportunity to move this process forward. We're fully committed to doing it in the manner that you asked of us, which is with full community engagement. We believe we have a great vision and a great opportunity, and we can create a great project, but it is not a situation where we're saying, hey, we're gonna go do it on our own, grant us an approval, and we'll take it from there. Just the opposite. We're prepared to go above and beyond what is required of us with the city and do this in a way that we can not only showcase a great project, but we can showcase in time a great process. And this truly is something that, in an academic world, you know, this should be published. We should be able to stand up in time with our academic partners, both at the university and at the high school, and demonstrate how a community can come together, work well together, work intelligently, and have a process that leads us to a better outcome than many projects follow. And that's the opportunity that we see. So we hope to have your support. We heard what you asked of us at the last meeting. I believe we've not only responded, but I think we've taken an approach to this that hopefully demonstrates to you the seriousness, the commitment, and the willingness to go about this in the way that will get us a better project than the process that we see in many other cities. So I appreciate the chance to just give you that briefing. Hopefully you found the packet to be helpful, and certainly happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you. I thought the packet was helpful. I'm just speaking for myself, but again, I haven't absorbed all of this. It's a lot of information, as you can imagine, and as you know. A couple of questions I had that just came up during your presentation. One, you mentioned the development advisory group, which I believe you described in the document as a committee of community stakeholders. How far along have you gotten into visualizing, at least, who would that include, who we're talking about? I know, not asking to name names, but generally, speaking, who are you talking about?
You know, we've, as we've been sort of testing this idea, and I should have mentioned in our last meeting, as we went through the process of community engagement, it was always my intent to put a question back to the community, and I did. You know, I asked the question, you know, very directly after summarizing this process that we wanted to follow. Would you prefer to go at it in the manner that we've outlined here, or would you prefer to go at it in a way where it's more incremental, project by project? And I think I can fairly represent, I'm not trying to speak for anyone, that the overwhelming sense and desire was, let's go at it this way. And so to now organize that development advisory group, we have had discussions with a number of individuals, and others have offered, as we've sort of put this idea out. So while we have not named names, and we don't have a list sitting here right now, it should be a well-rounded group of a manageable size that represents all interests that come into play here, that frankly will bring an objective approach and viewpoint to this, and together we'll work on creating this master plan, drafting the set of covenants, you know, and then ultimately moving this to a point where we're activating and, you know, we're advancing a project. So it won't take us long, you know, to define that group, and we really wanted to have this meeting, and hopefully we're taking positive steps forward, and we'll immediately get down to business of putting that group together.
We talk about process. I think process is very important here, and we had some questions before the meeting too, that I want to get confirmation from city staff as well as from you, Mr. Dunn, about the process. You know, we talk about incremental, you know, coming and going, one building at a time versus the final master plan, which is what I, you know, what we have says final master plan. So I think the question is, is there a scenario where you do not come back before this body in the city council to get these buildings done, the hotels, so forth?
You know, hard to say in absolute terms right now, because what this recommendation and hopefully the eventual approval of the city council will give us is that framework to work with. As we advance from there, if we deviate too far, we're obligated to come back to you and seek an amendment, you know, hope not to deviate so far that we're constantly back before you with amendments, but, you know, we would like to have the opportunity, I'll say, to come back to you, you know, as we advance with the development advisory group, and continue to inform you of the progress that we're making. So I'd be shocked if, you know, I'm not back before you again, or others, you know, on the team are not back with you again, and I would propose that part of our process is to give you regular updates on all aspects of what we're doing. Who is the development advisory group? What is our plan to advance that? Come back and inform you on the comprehensive master plan, ultimately share with you the covenants. Those are not requirements in land use in the city, but those are things that we would want to keep you fully apprised of as we move forward.
So it sounds like you would not be required to come back before the group if the master plan is approved, and everything goes to, if you stay within limits, I don't know what those limits are, but...
That's right. So if they build exactly what they are proposing to build in the development plan, then no, they would never come back here?
But my understanding of those development plans is, if you end up changing sidewalks, changing the size of the buildings, footprints, I mean, it would require...
Is it change or exceed? Does it change or exceed the perimeter that is currently drawn in the master plan?
You'd have to be in the same building footprint. You couldn't move it by foot, one side or the other, and you'd have to come back?
There's a 10%, I think it's written like 10% leniency where we can approve it administratively. But we certainly wouldn't approve something that we felt uncomfortable approving, right?
And it's not really even, it's not 10% across the board, it's...
It's per building.
If they were to move a building 10 feet, which is not much, then it has to come back to you. There, we are very limited in ways that we can make changes administratively.
What about something like, one of the proposals, or at least the ideas relating to salamander habitat wetlands on the east side of this development, was to reconfigure the layout of the fields, I think, to address kind of where some of those vernal ponds exist, and where some of the breeding grounds are. Like, if they were to move a field, is that something?
Yeah, that's a good question, and one that we talked about on a call last week. That, if they wanted to put in a swimming pool instead of a field, that would certainly have to come back. But for a field, probably not. They would probably be allowed to move that, ship that field to dodge vernal pools and things like that.
Mr. Dunn, I guess I wasn't at the last meeting, but I watched it online. I know that there was, there were quite a few questions that I think the meeting was tabled, so that there could be answers to those questions, come back to this forum, and so that the people could hear the answers to those. And I know we heard another presentation, but a lot of those questions, the light pollution to the hill behind you, you know, whether there's enough space to put the field, what the consequences are for the high school, traffic on lakeshore versus traffic on the in and out, the need for hotel, there was like, I mean, there was 15 or 20 of those questions that we've been reading emails all week with people having questions. I guess the question I have for you is, through the presentation, I see, I know that there's community work, I've been to two of the meetings, but the answers to a lot of those questions we still don't have answers to, right? So like, you know, is there any flexibility on the size of the hotel? To my knowledge, it starts in the fall, right, if it's approved, the fall of this year?
Construction starts in the fall? I would say that would be on the very aggressive end of the spectrum, but certainly within, you know, six months, eight months, we would expect to be underway with the first phase of development.
So I just think, I mean, still, it feels like the folks that are here, and probably some of the people that were in the first meeting, still would just love to hear some of the answers or some of the adjustment maybe that was made, or effort that was made to answer some of those questions, you know? Like, I still, I saw so many about light pollution behind it, I don't have a clue like what might be done to help mitigate some of that sound, the same, the high school, the same. And so, you know, I know, the plan I hear, and I see the presentation for today, but I'm still sort of, I mean, it may just be me, but I'm still sort of at a loss for somebody to answer some of those questions.
Yeah, I could speak to specific issues if you'd like. I think the, I guess I'd say realization that we've come to is, you know, every project, there's many issues like that, that we have to speak to as the process moves forward. I think our feeling is, probably unlike maybe every project that has advanced in the city of Homewood, this is a multi-phase, multi-year, mixed-use development. You know, we're standing here tonight, in many respects, trying to predict the future of, you know, exactly what and when, and, you know, just a lot of things that influence that. All of these things, we believe, have good solutions that design and engineering and the process will give us. Take an issue like light pollution. Well, there's fields there today. They have lighting technology that's a generation old. In the future, you know, I've built a lot of stadiums and sports venues, sound, light, there's much better technology today that concentrates light to the field and eliminates the type of light pollution that buildings like that are known for. Same holds true with sound. Traffic, you know, we've done a traffic impact analysis, we've shared that with the city. We know a lot about traffic. We know a lot about traffic. We're going to generate additional trips with the development, but there's also another, a number of mitigating circumstances and techniques that we can use to lower traffic impacts. Some of that's spoken to in the book, because that was one of the, you know, of the 10 or 12 that we heard sort of on a recurring basis. Stormwater, salamander habitat. We have to do more work on those, on issues of that magnitude, to really engineer the solutions. The submission that we've given the city, I believe, fair to say, meets all the technical requirements, and if we deviate, we certainly cannot exceed without coming back to you, but it's the process that is ultimately going to get us the answers to those questions. And we're willing to go through a process in a very different way than I think probably every project before us has gone through the city of Homewood. I mean, we have a university as a partner, they want to do this right. So, that's what we're asking for, is, you know, some of it is trust. Trust us to do this well, trust us to do this right, and trust us to do this in a way that gets, you know, has continued good engagement with the community. And as I said, I cannot promise you that we'll solve every issue to everyone's satisfaction, but I am confident, in the end, we'll have a project here that is a defining place in the city of Homewood.
And what remains? So, if it starts in fall, September of this year, what community engagement remains beyond that? Or is it all need to be done between now and whenever you would start or make a final decision?
No, we, if I could, just turn the very last, if you could, spread in the book. We try to give you a simple way of explaining a fairly complicated process, but the left page is really kind of how we've gone about the process of community engagement to date, and we'll continue through the process with hopefully, a meeting with the City Council and a favorable outcome with the City Council, right? It's a continuation of the type of communication and engagement that we've had. Once we have a framework, a development plan, that we can begin to engineer around, it's the challenge that we have, right? It's, you know, it's the cart before the horse. We've got to have a framework of a plan to now begin to engineer the solutions. That said, the next stage, what we call Phase Two here, that we'd like to step into, not required to do it, but we're prepared to do it, is to work through design and engineering with the advisory group at each step along the way with us, addressing the types of issues that you bring up. That will bring us to a point where we have a comprehensive master plan. Goes way beyond what's required of us with the city. Once we have that comprehensive master plan, and we feel it does everything we can do to speak to the issues, every issue, we could spend hours talking about these issues. Once we have that, we will then make the master plan a recorded filed document, you know, with the city, with the county usually, and that is then an obligation or requirement that we have, that we have to meet for every project that we go forward with, that will speak to things like architectural design, lighting, traffic, stormwater, impacts on habitat, height of building, I mean, the framework's set in the development plan, but it will speak to all of the issues that we have to be prepared to meet the requirements of the development plan, meet the zoning requirements, but then begin to execute these individual projects over a period of years. So, we put a lot of thought into this, and we feel confident that, you know, the types of issues that I could answer questions to all night long will be addressed very well as we go through this process.
Just helping, I'm trying to get to, is this construction start phase three, is to be determined, or is...
I can't...
Maybe help us, if you could walk through procedurally, how you envision the approval processes going for both with us and the City Council. Under this document, you're requested to give approval or your recommendation...
Sure.
For the rezoning and what's currently in...
Right.
Is written down as a final development plan...
Right.
Title, right? That goes before the City Council.
Correct.
The City Council would approve it, but then you're asking or proposing to set up a design review, some sort of ad hoc committee, to come, put together some sort of development terms and conditions, covenants that would run...
Right.
It really are, it's almost like a special use zoning, or special zoning district for this area.
More or less.
For more or less, right?
Yeah.
And then ultimately has to come back and get approved by somebody before you would move forward with development plans for, to actually move forward with building permits and everything else on the project.
Yeah, so, to your question, let's walk through the process. The left page really gets us to a point of City Council approval, in, you know, whatever timeframe that, we have a recommendation, hopefully favorable, we have a recommendation tonight that leads us to the council, and at some point in time, the council votes on the rezoning and the development plan that we've submitted to you. But let's just say for a minute, that's approved in X weeks. With that approval, we now have a framework of a plan. We know, you know, a context of the building type, the height, the use, the placement on the site, where parking could go. That informs us now with what we need to begin to move into the next phase. Absent that, we're guessing at everything. So, that gives us the ability to now move into the more detailed design and engineering for the overall site, and as we start that, we will start design on the first phase of buildings, which would be in the north end of the west, Creekside West. As that process proceeds, over a period of months, as we're working through the engineering and we're crafting the master plan, that will ultimately take us to a set of covenants. I would put that in a four to six month timeframe. It's not, hey, we're going to race through this, and in two weeks, we're going to pretend like we have answers to complicated questions. I wish that were the case, because it would be a lot less expensive, but it's a long process, it takes real time, real experts, and real community engagement. So, let's just say in X weeks, we had council approval, and over four to six months, we're working through this process of getting to a point where we can then file our covenants. Again, those covenants are not required of us, but, you know, those are self-imposed restrictions based on good work, good engineering, that we would file, and those become a recorded document. So, let's just say, you know, that took four to six months. After that, we would then be prepared to start the process of construction. So, that's why I said, you know, I think the first phase of construction, you could put in a six to eight month timeframe. It isn't, it's not eight weeks, and it's not two years, but we want to work through this process of getting the comprehensive plan set, and we have to start design of the first building. We've not done that yet, because we don't have an approved zoning.
The approaches you're taking is very admirable, right? Because there's a lot of complex stuff that you're doing. This project could be transformative, and be one of those lasting developments that really is, impacts Homewood for the next 20, 30, 40 years, or it could be horrible, right?
You're right.
And it could clog up streams, it could cause issues with parking, the road that's already, there's a whole lot of bad things that could happen, too. And so, you're going to have to work through a lot of challenges, right? Whether it's using low-impact design, whether it's underground retention, I mean, there's a lot of things that we're going to have to figure out from an engineering perspective, if the goals are to save the salamander or the creeks. There's a lot of things that have to be taken into impact, right?
Yes.
And so, my question about when you start looking at the design committee, you're coming up with these covenants, is shouldn't that go first before, to kind of give some framework for the engineering that you're trying to solve around, right? So, you're trying to, hey, we're trying to protect Shades Creek, right? And so, we need to make sure we have as much low-impact design, much self-contained stormwater retention underground. Give some frameworks to the things we're trying to protect...
Right.
Right? And have that first, and then, that gives a framework for the engineering and the design to move forward, meeting those requirements.
Yeah, I mean, this is...
It's a chicken and the egg thing, right?
It is. I mean, this has been not our problem, but our challenge. We have to have a framework of what we're going to build in order to understand the stormwater impact, or the traffic impact, or the noise, or light, or, pick any issue. We have to have a development plan, a final development plan approved, which we are then prepared to take that, you know, and frankly, go not just the extra mile, but several extra miles, to then put together a comprehensive plan, the alternative. Commissioner, you just touched on it, the alternative. We do it building by building? Then there is no comprehensive solution to these types of issues, right? I mean, the stormwater from a single building of three stories, we have to meet the requirements of addressing stormwater for a single building of three stories. That's why we came forward with the approach that we've come forward with. We think it's a more holistic, better way to approach land use planning, governance of this kind of multi-phase, multi-district development. I think it's fair to say, I don't mean to...
And I think, I agree with you, if you're doing this much comprehensive redevelopment of this, you need to be able to look at it holistically, right? And I think the question, I think maybe, Mr. Dunn's those questions, too, is, at the end of the day, when do we get to, are we giving carte blanche to move forward with the plan as it's currently proposed? Or can we put some frameworks into it that require you to come back before us to make sure that as you go through the design, the engineering, to solve some of these issues, that we get a chance to at least make sure that they're solved before we...
Yeah, I mean, in...
Or at least to give some more framework to what we're trying to solve.
Yeah, I mean, in fairness, respecting the partners that we have in this, and our, you know, our commitment to community engagement, you know, you don't have that requirement of us, right? We've filed a final development plan, we have to live within that framework. If we deviate, we come back to see you for whatever that deviation might be. But to put now, you know, a further set of approvals on that, when we're willing to go at it in the manner that we're not required to, but we feel is best practice, you know, that puts a real risk and burden on, well, we spent months and make a big investment, and, you know, while we said yes to the development plan, the answer later is no to the, you know, the stormwater management plan and what have you. And so, what we're asking of you is that we'd like to make it advisory, and advisory meaning with the input of the community. Frankly, we'd like to have city participation on the Development Advisory Group, and we'd like to have the ability to, you know, bring that process forward and keep you advised. And if we deviate off the final development plan, well, then, yes, we have to bring that back to you. But that's how we've thought through, and, you know, that's the proposal that we've made.
I wanted to ask specifically, I have been having conversations as late as this afternoon, and I wasn't able to look this over before I got here tonight, because I was on a Zoom call all day, but the salamander habitat. I have spoken with multiple environmental stewards, who I absolutely value their opinion, and I have not heard any of this. So, have these conversations been happening? Have you spoken with friends of Shades Creek? It has not reached the folks that would have, it should have reached as of this afternoon. So, what, you know, these pictures that I'm seeing, and, I mean, that looks like you're addressing it directly, but I don't think those conversations have been held with some people who are in very high esteem in the environmental community in Homewood.
Yeah, I mean, it's been one of the topics that we've had the greatest amount of discussion on. You know, we've had, as recently as last Thursday evening, our last community session, we really use that format, you know, to make it more of a question-answer. A lot of the meetings prior to that was more of an information exchange, you know, more one-on-one. Last week was more of an open forum, and we spent a good deal of time talking about the habitat in particular, probably the most discussed of the topics last week. Thought it was a very good discussion, you know, some are not going to agree with what we and our expert team believe can be solutions to address those issues, but we do feel confident that working together with some of the people that you know and have mentioned, and working with our team of experts, and continuing to cultivate the relationships and the dialogue with, you know, those members of the community that really do have strong interest in that issue, that we're going to find good ways to mitigate impacts that we know will be there, and address those concerns. But again, that, this is a case in point of, if we have a plan, an approved development plan, that we can start to work from, we don't want to deviate from that plan, but we feel that working within the confines of what the city governance gives us, we can speak to these issues very well with good design and engineering solutions. But we have to have, we have to have a plan to begin to build that, you know, that more comprehensive plan for salamander habitat, stormwater, water quality, what have you.
I think Creekside East, as far as a lot of the people here, a lot of people I've talked to, is a major environmental concern. I think we agree that that is the primary environmental concern. Can we pull up in this document, it's page 33, it's got the vernal pools and the drawing? I think more discussion around that would be helpful. Yes. So, on the right side, I don't know if we can zoom in on the actual, not the high school and not the, but maybe not. I'm interested in, it shows the vernal pools here, I believe, I don't know exactly where that came from, but it looks pretty accurate, as far as I know. And then it's got the fields. And talk more about how we can preserve those green spots and build the fields.
Right. Well, number one, I mean, certainly one of the most obvious answers to the question is, can we maneuver the footprint of the fields without deviating from the plan, right? The fields don't get larger, they don't get smaller, we don't change from a, you know, a soccer field to a swimming pool. Can we maneuver the plan to lessen the impact on the pools? And we feel that's certainly one of the techniques that we can be most effective with. Will there be absolutely no impact on the pools? We don't know yet, but this is the work that we want to begin to advance. There are other techniques that we're talking about. You know, in terms of ways, can we reposition, kind of fortify, build pools, you know, some will say no, other experts will say yes, and some will say, you know, that's an interesting application that we ought to explore, and see to what extent we can find a new best practice. Not saying there is or there isn't a solution there, but it's certainly something that we ought to explore. The tunnels under South Lake Shore, certainly something that we should, I mean, when we talk about protecting the habitat and the species, we cannot overlook creating a better path of migration than, you know, what occurs there today. So, that's what we're asking, is, give us the chance to prove these out and work toward good solutions.
I think further questions here, so what are these fields to be used for? What's the goal of these fields? And bear with me on these questions.
Much like, you know, obviously, where the track and soccer complex is today, it's A to replace those. These are largely practice facilities, there's not significant competition that occurs here. So, first and foremost, these are practice, these are intermural fields, and these fields, there are fields, intermural fields that sit on this property today. We have had discussions with the high school about shared use of these facilities with the high school and with the community. We've also been talking very directly with the university about, can we bring the competitive aspects of play, meaning soccer matches and, you know, track meets, of which there are not very many, on campus? You know, how can we, you know, do things that create the greatest community benefit while also mitigating the impacts to the environment?
The other track, though, what I'm getting at, the other track is used for varsity track for Sanford, right?
Primarily for practice, and I believe they've only hosted one meet a year there.
And their soccer games take place...
They do.
For the women's soccer team...
They do.
On that field. So, something I'm not seeing in the drawing is the bleachers for, that exist currently with the other soccer field, the other track. I don't know if there's room, that's not in the drawing. Are bleachers something that would, if they were built, that would void the plan and have to come back? That's a question for the city. That's a question for the city.
I think that the, the development plan shows bleachers.
It does.
In the actual development plan?
No, we don't, I haven't seen that.
So it was presented last month?
I didn't see it then either. But that, that's a outstanding question, obviously. Is there room for spectators?
There is, but, you know, uh-uh. It's a very small capacity, and this is one of the things that we're talking through with Sanford, is does competitive play come back on campus? Where they've gotten overabundance of bleachers, it's, you know, building's too big in some respects for soccer.
Okay, there's no bleachers on the, the track to, as far as the plan? Okay.
No bleachers on the track? Is that what you said?
Correct, what I was shown was bleachers on the right side field there, the east side.
Soccer field, I see bleachers, I don't-
Yes.
Particularly see bleachers on the track.
Okay. I think the larger concern with this is that these are ideas, they're not plans, as far as working with the community. And I think that was discussed previously, is kind of codifying that would be, would be appreciated as well.
Yeah, I mean, I, just to speak to that point, you know, this is a plan that technically we'd be prepared to say, we could go forward and execute this plan, and it would, you know, meet all the requirements that, you know, we came to the city with in, in the filing. The community engagement process has, has brought us back in front of you to say, you know, let's work with the community and let's better the plan. But we have to have something to start with. So I wouldn't characterize these as ideas, you know, there's a definitive plan that meets the requirements of the submission to the city for a final development plan that we think, without deviating off course, we can find ways to better and improve that plan. And we want to do it in a sort of full partnership with the community.
Two issues that I have overwhelmingly heard is the salamander habitat and then also the height of the hotel. It's just too high. What can you hear about that?
We, we have had some, some feedback on the height of the hotel. I, I want to be, I want to be clear, at least in first answering your question. I've heard statements of a hotel of 15 to 20 stories, that in no way is accurate.
I've heard 10 to 12 and then 15, so, but 10 is too high.
Yeah. Part of our reason to focus the one building on height is to help us lessen the impact on the site. That site in particular, because there's some, you know, very challenging subsurface conditions that we have to deal with. So height is important there. We have seen the building, or we have planned the building as something in the 10 to 12-story range. We think there's a, this section is, is helpful, I don't know the page that is exactly, I can find it here. And we've, we've tried to, you know, begin to build the context of why we feel one building of height in a mixed-use environment like this, particularly with the elevation and vegetation and the, you know, the built environment, particularly north on campus, is not entirely out of context. So our ask of you is, you know, to give us the ability to, to have one building that has more of a vertical orientation to it. And from the overall development plan perspective, it, it is important to us. If we were saying, look, we want to be able to move that anywhere on the site, or we think multiple buildings, you know, ought to be of that height, probably agree that, you know, we're not trying to create a, a tall environment here. But we've done a lot of study on this and don't feel it's out of context with its surroundings as a single building with a very small floor plate, small relative to an office building or something like that. So that, that's our hope.
I'll touch on height a little bit. So in our plans, it says 150 foot, you can see it right there for a hotel. So 150 foot, you're guesstimating is a 10 to 12-story hotel?
Correct.
And there's four other buildings, C1, C2, B1, B4, 85 feet in height. How many stories do you guesstimate is 85 feet?
Maybe up to six, you know, seven would be, you know, probably the upper limit.
I guess my concern is, we're probably looking at Regions and Downtown Homewood is one of our tallest buildings, seven stories at ground level and above. I know that the existing commercial office, I'm not exactly sure how many stories it is, but I believe it's probably around the six-story mark.
Four or five.
Four or five?
Yeah.
Yes.
So-
Well, one, one point, sort of interrupt. Important to think about a five-story office building relative to a 10-story hotel. The floor-to-floor height in an office building is considerably higher than the floor-to-floor height on a hotel. So, you know, a five-story office building is probably more in, by comparison, a six-to-seven story hotel. Just because of the additional height per floor.
Okay, well, I, I guess my concern is, is, is the height. And having, I would, I would be more open to, as long as you're negotiable of this, is, is having some sort of cap on height or having some sort of cap on stories as far as the hotel. Because again, we're bringing five buildings that are pretty much some of the tallest buildings that are in our market, so, part of my, so I guess it would be, are you negotiable on height?
Yeah, I mean, we, we, there isn't any one issue that I think defines this plan. It's not the height of that building. It is an important part of the project, we, we spent a lot of time on that yesterday with Dr. Taylor at Sanford, Dr. Coyne, and, you know, our other partners. I, I think we certainly could work towards something where we set an upper limit by stories. It's a little harder to say it by height, just because until we get it fully programmed, we don't know exactly the, the floor-to-floor heights, but certainly we can live within a limit. And I think if we said X stories, that's something we could, we could ultimately make work.
Before I, I don't know if there are other questions, before I recommend that we call for a vote on this, I would say that, I mean, you have, I don't know what the, the date of the, the city council meeting would be, but, I mean, it'd be my recommendation that the more of these issues you can flesh out before you have answers, more concrete answers before that meeting, I think the better off you're going to be. That's just speaking for myself, not, not, not as anyone else, but just something to, to think about, so.
I would agree, I, I would urge you strongly to have a very long meeting with, you know, the Friends of Shades Creek, Henry Hughes, Julie Price, you know, the, the really Homewood Environmental Commission. I, I mean, it, it's really an important impact with the city. I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's an identity, it's an iconic part of who Homewood is. And, and I've heard from faculty, current Sanford faculty and former Sanford faculty, who have major concerns about this environmentally. So I, I would really appreciate, I am going to see, no, I am going to see this again as a city councillor. So this is coming to my committee, and then we'll have a public hearing at the city council. And I need to hear more before, before I can move forward for me personally. I'm not speaking for anyone else up here, but I will see this again. But I, I just hope your first call tomorrow morning is to, you know, Henry Hughes or Jim Brown or, or somebody to start having these conversations.
Right, and I can say, we will absolutely do that, you know, we're after the right outcome here.
I do believe that, I do, I believe you on that. I'm not afraid of development, like, I'm not afraid of, you know, I don't want, you know, I'm not afraid of, of change, but it's a lot, and there are a lot of residential that is across the street. I know that, you know, Sanford is across the street, but, you know, we have heard from neighbors across the street. We've heard from neighbors up the hill in Dustavia. So there's still a lot to work through, and I do appreciate the approach, you know, of, of presenting an entire project. You know, a few months ago, we mentioned this last month, you know, the complaint at the Brookwood Village Development was that they didn't come forward with the big project. And, and that they were piecemealing it together. So I do appreciate the vision, and I love the idea of the kids going back and forth. I believe you when you say that traffic is going to, you know, those kids aren't going to be leaving campus three and four times a day like they do now, I do believe that. So I think the bones are there, I, I just, you know, I, I'm glad we slowed the process down. And, and, you know, the Alabama Audubon Society reached out to us today. I mean, you know, we, we're hearing from really respected voices in the community about the impact that this could have, and so like I said, I hope those are conversations that start tomorrow morning.
Yeah, I, I mean, I said it at the beginning, and I'll, I guess, if I can, close with remaking my argument. What we want is the chance, you know, to prove how to do this right. That, that's, that's really all we're saying is, hey, we'll, we'll, we'll put the extra effort, the extra time, the extra engagement, the dollar, I mean, the things that it takes to do this right. It's a big project by City of Homewood standards. I, I don't know if it's the biggest, but it's a big project. We're not interested in deviating, I mean, I've, I've had a lot of these conversations with people sitting behind me and many others, as has this entire team. Nobody's wrong. A lot of good issues have been put on the table. It's energized us to say, okay, what are we going to do with this? We need time, we need resources, we need engagement. And I'm confident we will get, we will get to outcomes that we can all look at and say, hey, we had a hand in doing it right. And all we're asking of you is, hopefully, a full round of support. Give us a chance to move this to the next step. And our commitment to you is, we're going to work to do it the right way through a process that goes beyond what you require of us with the end objective that we're going to get it right.
And procedurally, you will move forward to the next, I mean, you will, regardless of what happens tonight.
Understood.
You will move forward to the next step. So I want everyone in the audience to know, this is not the end-all-be-all, this is not the last word. This is the first step in the process, this moves to the city council from here with whatever recommendation up or down, it comes to committee, there will be a public hearing, there is a million more opportunities for public input, so please don't feel like this is the last, you know, things- We are moving, you know, with all of you in mind, so I hope everybody knows that.
And being a developer myself, I kind of know what's, what's, the techniques you can use, and it's not a zero-sum game. It's not development, no salamanders. You can do both.
Commissioner, I'm, I'm glad you said that.
And I think that's the key here, is, okay, how do we get a design in a way that allows salamander habitat to actually be improved, right? I like to fish down there, right? I can fish more and have a development take place, like, both things can exist simultaneously.
You're 100% correct. I've had a lot of comments, we've had a lot of comments, you know, about how we go about this. And, and we've had some comments that reach to the extreme, you know, it's all or nothing. We're going to destroy the habitat, I mean, those types of things. And I appreciate that perspective, but you're right, if we go about this the right way, we, we can, one plus one can equal more than two. And that's what we're asking.
So I think that's, that's, Chairman, I guess that's the question for, for either recommendation for or against. I mean, I think there's, they've proposed the idea of having this design-
Advisory group.
Advisory group. How do you include that in some sort of recommendation, one way or the other?
We, we can do that, whoever makes a motion can make a recommendation that we vote on a specific case with the caveat that our further recommendation is that we'd like a stipulation on the advisory group being part of this process. I think-
It would be appropriate with regard to the development plans as opposed to the rezoning.
So the rezoning could take, could take place as bad, these take place bad.
Well, I mean, if you're going to include that as a condition, I would think as part of the development plan approval, that would be where you would do it, as opposed to the rezoning, which is-
For '03 and '05, not '02 or '04. And speaking of that, in terms of the order of the vote, I mean, we can vote on the rezoning, two items first and then do, or we can just go straight through by numerical, do you have a preference on how we vote on those?
No.
I mean, each, each development plan is associated with a particular rezoning request, so I would-
So we need the rezoning first?
I would do the companion development plan in association with the proposed rezoning.
Okay, so just go straight through the, the number, okay. Okay, that's it, I would entertain a motion to approve for a vote, RZ 250302. That's the rezoning for the west-
Creekside West.
Creekside West.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Andress, you made the motion, and Mr. Harwell seconded, okay? All right, Mr. Broadhead?
Yes.
Mr. Gulas?
Yes.
Ms. Andress?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Henninger?
Yes.
Mr. Armstead?
Yes.
Mr. Respinto?
Yes.
Mr. Harwell?
Yes.
Ms. Wilcutt?
Yes.
And Mr. Roberts?
Yes, so the rezoning for West Creekside will go forward to the city council with a 9-0 positive recommendation. I would also entertain a motion to vote, to approve a vote on FD 250303, which is the final development plan for Creekside West.
So moved.
Second.
Did that motion include the earlier conversation?
Right. The Mr. Gulas just reminded me of that.
Yes, that, that would be conditioned-
The advisory.
Set up the advisory board.
Okay, all right. Mr. Broadhead?
Yes.
Mr. Gulas?
Yes.
Ms. Andress?
No.
Did he, did he say no?
I said no. Yes, I'm sorry, I'm mumbling.
My husband says I mumble, I'm sorry.
I didn't hear it correctly.
Correct, I said no.
Mr. Henninger?
Yes.
Mr. Armstead?
No.
Mr. Respinto?
No.
Mr. Harwell?
Yes.
Ms. Wilcutt?
Yes.
And Mr. Roberts?
Yes, so that case, the final development plan for Creekside West will go forward with a 6-3 positive recommendation to city council. And with that, I would entertain a motion to approve a vote on RZ 03, or 250304, which is the rezoning with regard to Creekside East.
I wanted to just comment before, I will make that motion, again, I, I know our department, we are non-conforming zoning right now, it is a P-mixed now, and we are, it is being used as an institutional, so it is currently not zoned, it's non-conforming zoning right now, I just want to make that comment. So I will make that motion to approve rezoning, case RZ 250304.
Second. Second.
All right. Mr. Broadhead?
Yes.
Mr. Gulas?
Yes.
Ms. Andress?
Yes.
Mr. Henninger?
No.
Mr. Armstead?
No.
Mr. Respinto?
Yes.
Mr. Harwell?
Yes.
Ms. Wilcutt?
Yes.
And Mr. Roberts?
Yes, so the rezoning request for Creekside East will go forward to the city council with a 7-2 positive vote. All right, now with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve for a vote, FD 250305, again with the stipulation regarding the formation of a development group, or advisory group.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Gulas?
All right, Mr. Broadhead?
Yes.
Mr. Gulas?
Yes.
Ms. Andress?
No.
Mr. Henninger?
No.
Mr. Armstead?
No.
Mr. Respinto?
No.
Mr. Harwell?
Yes.
Ms. Wilcutt?
Yes.
And Mr. Roberts?
Yes, so the final development plan for Creekside East will proceed to city council with a 5-4 positive recommendation. All right, that's all we have, I guess, on this case?
All right, that's all we have, I guess, on this case?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, moving along, new business. The only, well, the only new case we have, we have another item, is a resurvey request, case number RS 250402. It's the Westbury replat, the applicant is Bailey Land Group, if you could come forward and state your case. If you could state your name for the record and write it on the pad there, that would be great.
My name is Asaf Stein, I'm a representative of Westbury Investments, and Bailey Land Group is our surveyor for our property. Thank you all for being here this evening, I appreciate your time and consideration. Our request is relatively simple, we just want to redraw the internal subdivided lines of our property such that we can build outside of the flood zone that occupies about a third of our property currently.
You don't want to report him? Missed the best case of the whole day?
Oh, sorry. Very compelling. So I believe you have the materials, is that correct? Let me pull them up here where I sent the city. So currently, it's one property, but it's five lots of record, so one parcel ID, but five lots, each divided evenly, about 70 feet wide, for a total of 350 feet of street frontage. About roughly half of the topography is in the flood zone, and that, as you can see there, and half is not. And so if you, I should have another one as well, that, yeah, those are roughly the five individual lots. So if we were to shrink just the street frontage by 15 feet for the first, the northern three lots, from 70 to 55, that would allow us to then build, or stay out of, the flood zone. We would still have lots four and five that remain in the flood zone, but we simply wouldn't be doing anything with them. And I know that's, has no bearing on your decision today, or the scope of this meeting, but we would most likely just end up donating to the City of Homewood. It's in the flood zone, it's almost 40 feet below street level, so even if you were to build it, it's just less attractive for a single-family home in this NPD zoning to be that low, practicality aside. We attempted to do an NPD calculation for moving these lines, to make sure that we were consistent with the adjacent properties. Unfortunately, we weren't actually able to accomplish the NPD calculation because there are only two adjacent lots within the given radius, and the NPD calculation stipulates that you can throw out outlier lots, ones that are outliers for a variety of things, square footage, you know, certain dimensions, or just odd polygons. In fact, that's what we have, we have one, we only have two adjacent lots to compare to, and just north of there you see, it's hard to tell the exact property lines on this, but it says 1,000 and above at 524, those addresses have changed, but it's a very oblong sort of triangle. So the city lawyer, in fact, said, you really can't do the NPD calculation, we don't have enough input to actually do the calculation. However, if you look at, just if you kind of make a wider circle, even with shortening them, we still have 11,000 square feet per lot, and 55 feet of street frontage, which is consistent with, you know, the existing neighborhood. And so we could still build single-family homes there while respecting all variances and things like that as well. And that would allow us, again, to stay out of the flood zone. So that is essentially our request.
Well, thank you, Mr. Stein, this is a public hearing, if anyone from the public wants to come forward and speak to this case, this is your opportunity. Okay, and seeing no one, we'll close the public portion and open it up for questions. And if there are no questions from the commission, I would entertain a motion to approve for a vote, RS 250402.
So moved.
All right. Mr. Broadhead?
Yes.
Mr. Goulas?
Yes.
Ms. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Henninger?
Yes.
Mr. Armstead?
Yes.
Mr. Respinto?
Yes.
Mr. Harwell?
Yes.
Ms. Wilcutt?
Yes.
And Mr. Roberts?
Yes, so your resurvey request is approved, thank you. All right, final item for business, the second new item is a proposed amendment to Article Four of the zoning ordinance relating to a planned mixed-use district. Mr. Smith, if you could just briefly explain what is being requested here?
Yeah, Hunter has volunteered to present, so-
Oh, excellent.
He's your guy.
Do you want me to stand up there and state my name?
Yes, state your name, please. What's that?
Hunter Martin, I'm not a human resident, I work for the city. So item two is a proposed amendment to Article Four District Uses, revising Section Z and Section GG relating to permitted uses. It's written that way, but I think it's easier to talk about it the other way. GG is our chart that we use, so when people want to start a business, open a business, build something, we refer to this chart to see what's allowed in the district. Currently, in PMUD, it is blank under food and beverage drive-through, so they're not allowed. They exist in the Wildwood Center, so we're trying to clean that up to restrict it, that's what the R means, and then that comes to Section Z, where we put an Item D, food and beverage drive-through, only permitted in the Wildwood Center. So if this moves forward, we can allow drive-throughs with what we added in the recent revisions with landscaping requirements and things like that, but they'll be allowed, they're a permitted use in the Wildwood Center, not in other PMUD areas.
Did anyone understand that? Yes, just kidding. Did a great job, did a great job. So I guess do we, just, do we, I guess, yeah, does anyone have any questions?
Hunter, can you begin, can you start at the beginning, and I want you to talk about-
Three reads.
I need you to dive deep into the zoning code, no, I'm kidding.
It's like it's really hard to know which section, unless you read all the sections to us, can you start from the top?
Exactly, exactly.
It's like an insurance policy.
A full understanding of the whole zoning code. I will move to approve.
Second.
I didn't get the second. Okay, all right, thank you. All right. Mr. Broadhead?
Yes.
Mr. Goulas?
Yes.
Ms. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Henninger?
Yes.
Mr. Armstead?
Yes.
Mr. Respinto?
Yes.
Mr. Harwell?
Yes.
Ms. Wilcutt?
Yes.
And Mr. Roberts?
Yes, so we have approved, or at least, I guess, recommended the change to the zoning ordinance. All right, with that, unless there's any other business, I will adjourn us.